I'd like to call the regular evening meeting of Township Langley Council to order. And the first item on the agenda is the approval and receipt of the agenda items.
Second.
This is Councillor Fox moves, second by Councillor Davis. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And next item is adoption of minutes, regular evening council meeting of January 30th, and a public hearing of January 30th. Councillor Fox, second by Councillor Arnesson. Any errors or omissions? All those in favor, opposed and carried. There are no presentations, delegations, or reports to councils, they're removed directly. And with all haste, to F, bylaws for first and second reading. F1 is resoning application number 100454, bylaw number 5243, Studio B, Architects. Councillor Fox, second. Councillor Qualley, any discussion on F1? Councillor Fox.
Yeah, just quickly through you to Mr. Seffey, I guess, some of these lots have already, these lots are still vacant, or some have been built on already.
These particular ones, your worship, are vacant.
They're all vacant, okay. Thank you.
The other, Councillor Arnesson.
Yeah, yes, thank you, your worship. Through you to Mr. Seffey, I guess. I'm wondering if the parking requirements stay the same, if they're actually allowed to have more square footage?
They would be increased.
Oh, okay. And, um, what am I, oh, I do have another one. I just wondered if there was any consideration for, if they're going to increase the lot coverage, if they're going to put in any mitigating kind of surfaces there, such as pavers or other kind of rain gardens?
We can propose that to the applicant, your worship, yeah.
Okay, I think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, call the question on F1. That carries unanimously. And we move on to bylaws for consideration at third reading. This is H1, resoning application number 100470, Granite Homes Limited, bylaw number 5256. Can I have a motion? Councillor Fox, second by Councillor Davis. Any discussion on H1? Seeing none, I'll call a question. That carries unanimously. And now we move on to the Mayor and Council report. And thank you for coming out. It's the people from the most northern part of the municipality that made it here. Welcome here. And first, I'd like to thank our staff, who've been dealing with this unusual snowfall for how many times now? Third or fourth major event we've had this year about that? And certainly, and then, of course, it always happens on a weekend or on a holiday, but great job they've done, and I've had some comments, some accolades already from the public. So, and also to thank township residents, I know people go out and they help their neighbors, and I certainly know that, it's how we get to know our neighbors when we're shoveling their sidewalks. On Friday afternoon was a special announcement of the Alder Grove Credit Union Community Centre site, where our Member of Parliament, John Eldag, announced that the township would be receiving up to $9.8 million in federal funding for this project. Well, I think $9.8 million is a heck of a lot of money, and with this announcement of this generous grant from the federal government's provincial territorial infrastructure component, national and regional projects, this new centre will be a truly spectacular facility that will attract residents and visitors and residents from throughout our municipality and our region to our community. Since the outset of the planning process, we've been working hard to find grant opportunities from our federal and provincial partners. About a year ago, the federal government recognized the importance of facilities such as this to communities across Canada, and indicated to us that there may be funding for a centre. And one thing I can guarantee you is that when that door opened, it was, everybody was working hard to get that funding, and we spent a lot of time with provincial and federal partners working to make it happen. So, on behalf of council and our residents, I want to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation to Member of Parliament, John Eldag, who is instrumental in guiding us to secure this funding. He brought the possibility of this grant to council, and I know that without his dedication and hard work, it wouldn't have happened. Also, our sincere gratitude to Minister Amerjeet Sohi, Minister of Infrastructure, Communities and Communities, for his support. Certainly, we've found support from our provincial counterparts, from Mark Warbaugh, the Member of Parliament for, in the Alder Grove area, and certainly it was a teamwork and working together to make this happen. And also, it's important to really thank our community, who supported this project, provided valuable suggestions to council along the way, and did not let council lose sight of how important this facility is to all of us. And we look forward to the opening of this, the official opening during the summer of 2018. Hopefully, a warmer day than what you see there, with the snow blowing in Alder Grove. Last evening, on Sunday, February the 5th, the Langley Chinese, the Live Langley Chinese Association held the 2017 Lunar New Year Gala Event at the church in the valley. It's the year of the rooster, and Happy New Year.
Lord Communitarian.
Okay. And I know Councillor Arnesson attended also with me, so great to, I think 700 people showed up for that. It was quite a nice event. So, that's my report. Do any members of council have anything to add? Councillor Fox.
Thank you, your worship. Metro Vancouver Aboriginal Relations Committee, we had a meeting. I just wanted to bring to colleagues' attention, we had a presentation from Celeste Haldane and Tom Happenook at that meeting, and I have three documents here, which I'm more than prepared to share with my colleagues. This one is Metro Vancouver's profile of First Nations with interests in the region. Kind of encapsulates all the First Nations that Metro Vancouver is dealing with in our committee. This is negotiations, treaties, and reconciliation. This is an update on that for kind of a, I guess, a summary of 2016, where things are at with all the treaty negotiations. And lastly, is an interesting document put out by Deloitte on the socioeconomic benefits of modern treaties in B.C. And Tom Happenook related, he's from the east coast of, sorry, west coast of Vancouver Island, Banfield area, and he illustrated the value that the treaty and reconciliation has benefited his community in that area, and they're a very progressive group of First Nations, and they're doing extremely well. So, anyway, they are the people that are at the beginning of the northern terminus of the West Coast Trail, and they find that to be a significant economic boom. So, I'll leave these. If you want to look at them, I'll put them in the office on the filing cabinet there, and you can take a look at them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next Monday is Family Day, so we won't be meeting here, and certainly wish everybody a great day. Hopefully, the snow is gone by then, or a good snow day. So, with that, we'll move on to other business, and I'm going to put Councillor Qualley on, as Councillor Qualley has a piece of other business. Councillor Qualley, there you go.
Thank you. I just have a question, I guess, for you, through Mayor Froze, Mr. Seffey, if I could. I just want to be clear that on the matrix you provided, which, thank you very much for that, it's very clear, that sidewalk pricing, the 1 million or the 1.5 million, is all, carries that sidewalk all the way down to Wright. Is that correct?
That's correct, your worship.
So, if we carried the sidewalk, okay, so I think I'd like to proceed then with a motion. So, I think, based on the understanding that that price is to Wright, if, my motion would be then to approve a crosswalk, or, sorry, approve the sidewalk installation all the way to Crickmere, which is about half the distance of Wright, with the sidewalk on both sides of 96th Ave., and a crosswalk installation at Edel, the total price on that would be about 8.25. Is that about right, Mr. Seffey?
Seffey, would that be fair to assume that that would be roughly half the cost of going to Wright Street, or perhaps a bit less?
That would be in the ballpark, your worship, that would be a good estimation.
And the crosswalk you're recommending is the one that's presented as $75,000?
Yes, that's my, that's, yeah, based on the two choices, so it would be the $75,000. So, just so I'm really clear on this, we already have $450,000 in the budget for this project, and if we leave that in there, we would have, we would still need to find 375,000. So, I guess that's my motion, is to proceed with the $450,000 with sidewalks on both sides of 96th to Crickmere, and the $75,000 crosswalk, and then leave the remaining $375,000 with staff to find funding in reserves and surpluses, or through internal borrowing.
Second by Councillor Fox. Any discussion on that?
Your worship, could I request a clarification?
Sure.
Just for staff's understanding. So, that would be option 1A, not option 1B, except the distance would be now limited to approximately halfway.
That's correct. To Crickmere.
One is one side.
No, it's option 1B.
Both sides.
1B, sorry, yeah.
Both sides, yes. Option 1B, with the sidewalk going to Crickmere, and then the option 3B of the crosswalk.
Thank you. Okay, so that's been moved and seconded, and Councillor Long.
Well, your worship, that's not the motion that was on the notice of motion, and it's not even on the matrix, so it's a new one, and I don't know, does that really help? Is, do you only go to Crickmere, so is that good? I don't know. Can we, I guess we're going to have to get, we have to get, if we're going to spend that kind of money, I think we have to get something back from staff. Is that the intention of the motion, that staff would report on the rationale and the objectives and the, on the advice on going only to Crickmere, which I don't have a map handy, but...
Okay, as I understand it, the last page of the agenda, on the evening agenda, had a matrix of options for council to consider, and as I understand it, the staff would need direction on how far this should go from council. The, I believe the reason, up to Edel, has been talked about, is that that is an area where schoolchildren are crossing 96th Avenue to then go to Crickmere.
I understand that, 3B is an option that's clearly presented, I can, I can, I can get in on that.
But the other, reduction in...
Cutting the sidewalk in half, I don't know anything about, so, you know, I don't, I guess if the rest of council can support it, they must know more than I do, because I really don't understand how that solves the issue of pedestrian and cyclists sharing 96th Avenue with trucks.
Thank you. I don't know if Mr. Seffey can comment on that.
Your worship, did you want me to try and pull up a map, or?
Sure. Please. While he does that, can I move on to the next, and then we'll come back to the map?
Next.
Next speaker. I'll just go to Councillor Whitmarsh, and then we'll...
Yeah, so as we're getting the map up, I like this, I think that it, you know, most of the comments that were made from the group that presented to us last week, and other comments that I've heard, is certainly the primary concern seems to be the crossing of 96th, you know, coming from Bedford Landing and over to the school, and being able to have a crosswalk. And so I think this, this really helps us to manage that issue of having the crosswalk in the right place for students and children. Most of the issues have been around children crossing 96th, and this also provides a sidewalk for, from Glover Road down to Kriptner, which is just past Edel, and allows that sidewalk to cover for, for the children to get back and forth. It's right at the pathway coming out of Kriptner, that's why Kriptner's a good option, I think. And it allows us to fit it close, or fairly close to budget. It doesn't preclude the fact that we could extend the sidewalk at later years. At other times, we could decide to extend it all the way down to Wright, but it does provide a double sidewalk all the way down from Glover on both sides of the road. And I think there is room to put a psychopath, and I think it'd be important for me that there is a good demarcation of psychopath, painting of those lines, and they, on the side of the road, there's good space for that, and like we currently have, and I think maybe just new paint, brighter paint would help with the cycling, but I think it's, this is a good solution and a good way to manage it within budget, or close to budget.
Thank you. Councillor Long, the map is up, I'll go back to you.
So, what I see here then is that about half the street doesn't get sidewalk, but half does, and I guess there's been a determination by the mover that they're the people that deserve it, and the other guys don't, so I don't get it. I can't support it, because I tell you, I thought we were quite brilliant with the other solution of the delineated lane all the way, and I've done a bunch of research on it, and I don't believe for a minute what we heard about cyclists not being able to, you know, share the road with pedestrians. If you look on the link that I've sent to council, all over the world, they are sharing roadways with cyclists, unless, of course, you've got over 200 pedestrians per hour and some other things that are mentioned in this report that I've sent around. I was taken back by some of the comments about it being temporary, and about it having the raised curb maybe not being suitable, so I would have liked staff to have told us what it would cost to put concrete delineators down like they do in Vancouver with bike lanes to make it a little bit safer, but that, to me, solved it by having the sidewalk go all the way to Wright. So, at minimum, I would, well, I've said my piece. I think we'd be better off to go all the way down and save a half a million dollars.
You. Councillor Qualley.
Thank you. Just to address that, this isn't about who deserves a sidewalk and who doesn't deserve a sidewalk. When I brought this motion to council months and months ago, this was about connectivity from the school, from the cemetery, from the park and the pool, to the rest of the village, and that was the purpose of that. And the crosswalk at Edel provides the connectivity from the village and from Bedford to the school and to the other, the park, the pool, and all of those pieces. So, that was my concern all along, was the connectivity from the village to the other pieces where people were availing themselves of the recreation facilities. And in your research, Councillor Long, I'm surprised you didn't realize there was already a bike lane in place there in Fort Langley on 96th Avenue. In fact, it was in the pictures that the FLCA presented last week, but I guess they didn't really point that out, that there is an existing bike lane. So, it is possible for cyclists and pedestrians to use that road the way they are now. So, 96th Avenue, doing this on both sides, isn't about who deserves the sidewalk. Really, the pedestrians deserve the sidewalk, and they deserve to be off the road, because right now the pedestrians are walking in the bike lane. And that was the purpose of this whole process when it started months ago. So, coming up with this, to do the sidewalk to Crickmere with the crosswalk at Edel, and in future budgets, it would be amazing to see all of that sidewalked all the way through on both the north and south side, all the way through to Wright, and finish that off. But right now, the priority for me, and hopefully for the rest of council, is the safety of the pedestrians that are utilizing those pieces on the south side of 96th Avenue. So, that's why the motion is the way it is.
Thank you. Councillor Fox.
Yeah, I'll just state, this is the threshold of what I'm prepared to support this year financially. I think it's a good compromise at this point in time. I, you know, this is a fairly expensive undertaking, and we have to be cautious, because we have put some of it in the budget, but we haven't got it all in the budget. So, we have to be cautious about, okay, where are we going to find the money? If I took 100 emails that I've received on this, 90 or to 95 of them have been about a crosswalk, not so much about a sidewalk. So, I think that this is a really great compromise, both financially and functionally. It allows the majority of students to cross from Bedford Landing over the overpass, along Edel, and across to the Fine Arts School, or if they're going to Alder, sorry, Fort Langley Elementary, they can go down 96th, and then go up most of the way to the elementary school on a sidewalk, and so on. So, I think it clarifies all of those issues that seem to be very apparent. The interesting thing about this is, that certainly, part of the discussion that came from the public was, we opened up a whole can of worms, and people started talking about traffic calming, and this on my street, not this on my street, and so on, so on, so forth. So, I think this will answer the majority of the people who wanted a crosswalk. It won't answer everybody's situation right now, but the other thing is, it's doable next year, or, sorry, this year. So, it will be in this year's work plan. So, it's getting done in an expedient fashion.
Thank you. Councillor Davis.
Thank you. Could I just clarify, Councillor, through the chair, you said Wright from Wright?
No.
No.
Okay, so the...
I heard you say Wright Street.
Yeah, the, in the agenda...
Can you move that down a bit?
Yeah, in the agenda...
No, it's all there.
Yeah, in the agenda, it talks about two options. One is having a sidewalk for 1 million, and the other is on the south side, and the other option is to have the sidewalk for 1.5 million, and that would include north, south, and north side. And it doesn't state in the report, but when I asked, I think it was clarified again tonight, I asked Mr. Seffey what that included, he said that included up to Wright Street, so that's been, so what the proposal is on tonight, the motion, is to take it, not quite so far, in fact, is I believe it's less than half, and some of that sidewalk has already been complete in front of the professional building, so with, with the, as Mr. Seffey called, the ballpark figure of 1.5 million for both sides, it's safe to assume that it's going to be half or less than half, because the distance is a bit shorter. So, to ensure, so the $450,000 is already in the budget, and so the additional funds, which we're assuming would be 375, but it could be less, would be found from existing surpluses. So, I hope that clarifies. So, Wright Street is up on top there on the left, but the proposal is to fit it within the existing budget numbers, to only take it to Crickmere.
Okay, so, did you agree with his answer?
Yeah, but I think just to clarify...
Because I still have to clarify.
For Councillor Davis, where you're pointing there, so you see where Edel Street is?
Yep, yep.
So, Crickmere's just a little bit off.
Well, that's it, right there, yeah.
So, the suggestion was to make it so that they're parallel with each other, so they're not staggered. So, the crosswalk would go at Edel, and then they'd have to walk a few feet down to connectivity to the path, because if you look at the train tracks at Billy Brown Road, yeah, so that's where they cross the overpass, the kids that are coming to the school, and they walk that path down Edel Street, right to the, towards the school, so that's why the crosswalk there.
Okay.
And then finish the sidewalks at the bulge there, at Crickmere, which isn't labeled on the map, unfortunately, but it's right there, and that's where the path picks up again.
There it is there. Okay, so that, so basically then, this is the, this is the negativeness of having already $450,000 in there, now we're, now we're going to put, we're going from Crickmere down to 96th then?
No, sorry, where'd the map go? So, from, yeah, from 96th Avenue, 96th Avenue intersects with Crickmere, right?
Right there, yeah.
So, you see where Edel comes out?
Yeah.
Right where the mouse was.
Okay, there's a crosswalk across there.
Yeah, right there.
And then the sidewalk goes up to Crickmere.
And then they walk down there.
So, so the sidewalk, okay, from, from the delegations, and from talking to a couple of people, I realized that I think the crosswalk is actually one of the most important things. But, so where are the, in your, in your motion, if we got 2, 1B, that's a 1.5 million...
But half of that.
Okay, so, so you're going to go, but so it starts at Glover Road, right to Crickmere, on both sides?
Yes, so that would be half the cost, because if you went Glover Road to Wright, that's 1.5. If you go Glover Road to Crickmere, that's 7.50.
Yeah, okay.
Right? So, or less. So, the motion is for 7.50 from Glover to Crickmere.
And we, we put a crosswalk in at...
Yeah, so that takes the total envelope to eight and a quarter with the crosswalk. Are you with me?
Yep, yep.
And then, when you back out the 4, or the 400 we already have, 450 we already have in the budget, the extra funding would be 3.75, is the motion, to come from reserves and surplus or internal borrowing. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, that gives everybody the connectivity from the main part of the village on Glover, and then the crosswalk.
And that, but there's, nothing goes from Crickmere up further? Nothing.
So, in future years, we could finish it and carry it all the way up to Wright.
Yeah.
But that's less important, I think, because the connectivity to that pathway is really what I was trying to achieve.
Yeah.
And that crosswalk makes sense there.
Okay, because it, if, okay, I guess, the other thing that I'm concerned about is, and I'm, I don't, if, if we were to just do the sidewalk on one side, we could go all the way up, and, but that's not in your, that's not in the, that's not your proposing. Because I don't, I, I don't want to not vote against it, because I want the sidewalk going right to Wright, because then everybody could use a sidewalk, whether it be on one side or the other. But I guess, I guess that's my concern, is that we get the crosswalk in, that's the most important, and it just, yeah, okay, I think that clarified some of the questions. The other thing through the staff is, this is an estimate, but are we still going on the estimate from what we talked about two months, two weeks ago, or is this something, is this going to be pretty close? It's obviously going to be, remember what we just talked about, we fell short, but anyhow, is this going to be pretty good on the budget, or is this something that, because the last time we talked about this, we came up, we had to put more money in for this estimate, I just...
Your worship, this is an estimate that is not based on a design. It is what we call a Class C estimate. It is simply based on a measurement, linear measurement, on what a typical sidewalk and curb and gutter and street light, those costs for, per linear meter, multiply that by the length, and that's the cost. There has to be a survey done, there has to be a design done, and the costs are subject to change based on detailed design.
But if, I heard Councillor Fox say that this is something we're going to do this year on this budget, if we don't know what it is, how can we take that? How can we go forward with that for this year?
Your worship, usually, that's, that's the type of estimating that we do for budget purposes, is based on design that is not refined, to the degree that we have an absolute certainty as to the number. There is a contingency built into it, I think it's about 15% contingency that's been built into it, to make sure that there are, you know, no need to come back and request more funding if, if the actual design reveals other things that, that need to be borne in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Arnesson.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I've changed my position, actually, from my original one, where I was trying to weigh the interest between our budget and considerations and the other things we need to spend money on, and putting in something that's appropriate. I would say, right off the bat, that I'm supportive of 3B, which is the crosswalk, I think that's very important. I have a question through your worship to staff. I'm wondering, because I know we talked before about the fact that if you're doing a project in increments, that it's going to be more expensive if you do it in two phases, as opposed to one, so, I believe, and so my question is whether or not, rather than deciding just based on, you know, put, making it halfway, for example, whether or not there is any rationality in creating another standard for where it should be, just depending on how we lay it out? I don't know if that question makes sense. Smiling like, no. You know, if you're going to, because I would like to continue it, so it does go down to Wright, but I'm wondering, you know, what would be the best way to proceed to do that? Does it really matter if you have an artificial delineation, or if, you know, there's some structural reason why, if it fell short by a couple of feet, it, you know, would be better? I don't know.
Well, if I can interpret that...
Thank you.
Is that by doing one, doing two phases, say it's 400 meters each phase, is that going to cost more than double, doing one phase? Or the way we're structuring it, is that what you're asking, that the cost of doing it two phases can be increased?
I presume that was the case.
Okay, okay.
My, I guess it's, it's hard to articulate what my question is, because I don't know enough about sidewalk construction. But basically, was it, you know, if you made it halfway or a third of a way, does that make any difference with respect to the pricing, or is it sidewalks are by the foot or by the yard?
Your worship, to guard against construction cost increases, or the construction index increasing, it would be best to build the entire desired length. That, however, has financial consequences, because, of course, the cost will be higher. Failing that, then, it's always difficult, if one is to phase a project, to be, say, phasing one side of the street and then the other. That's, tends to be more expensive, because there's some interplay between the two. In this circumstance, by doing both sides of the street, effectively doing a two-phase project, where the first phase can be completed in its entirety, and then go on to the second phase if council so directs later on, that's probably the most economical, because you've got the entire street then being done, not one side, and then returning to do the other side, because there's going to be cross-connect issues. But again, the entire piece is your least risk, most cost, and if you're going to do halfway, then doing both sides is probably the next best solution.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I've got Councillor Long for a second time. I just, there's one comment I want to make, and that's, I was torn between the two styles, the raised curb, and like we have on 2/8 by the high school there. And I drove down 2/8, and I know, and thinking of safety for cyclists, and I talked to cyclists, they like the streets clean. And I believe, and Mr. Seffey, you can help me with this, that for our street sweepers to get, with that curb in the way, they can't get over there. So, so the path is great for pedestrians, but the cyclists are now traveling over a bunch of debris. That's what it seemed to be, and almost less safe, so is that, can we get... to be, and almost less safe. So is that, can we get sweepers along those areas where there's the curb, just the curb delineation?
Your worship, it can be done, but it requires a different type of equipment, and it's more challenging.
Okay, thanks. That's one thing I noticed, that it doesn't seem safe to me. Counsel Long?
Yeah, I'm sure there's a way to sweep the side. If we're all talking about the need to sweep the road, I'm sure we can find a way to do that. There's, there's no problem with that. Why it's not being done, I don't know. But I don't think that's a reason to spend another million dollars, or half a million, or whatever it's come up to. But, you know, I go back to my original point, there is half that road that isn't gonna get it, so that half. So what is their plan for that currently, then? So a few points. First of all, this is, to me, being a bit of a policy guy, this is no way to make a million-dollar decision. We should have a report, and we should have the options in front of us, your worship. You're running the meeting. I guess we'll go with whatever you decide. But I think we'd be much better served, to our taxpayers, to have a report come back from council on this, the new motion that's come forward, because it's not the same as the notice of motion. But given that we're discussing it and having some fun with it, I guess, because there's nothing else to do tonight, what is gonna happen with that road from there to Wright Street currently? And I wish I was more intimately familiar with it today. But is there any plan for that? That's my first question. What about doing a bit of both? Boy, we could be so happy here. We could do this double raised sidewalk all the way to Krickmere, and maybe do the delineated one from there to Wright. What would be the cost of that? Yeah, I guess that would be an interesting question. There's Seffy? So we could do the whole thing.
Your worship, the, the way that sidewalks, and in fact, all sort of improvements are typically done, is either through the budget process, or as part of a development, or I guess as part of a local area service project. With respect to sidewalks, they are part of our current standards. They were not part of the standards when 96th Avenue was built originally. So really, there aren't any plans to install sidewalks unless it's directed by council for staff to include in the budget, which is, which is what council is considering right now. And I guess in terms of the, I forget, Counsel Long, the second question?
Well, if you use the same math that we're using to spend this money, I guess you'd take the whole distance, which was 450, and say, well, let's do half of it with a delineated asphalt curb. So that would be, I guess, 225. And then this addition is apparently 375, right?
This is about 350 meters. The entire length, as I recall, is about 800 meters. And the section from Krickmere to Wright Street is currently basically just paved shoulders. There aren't any pedestrian facilities. So it's just a question of extrapolating the numbers that staff have presented in terms of the approximate length that the money essentially can buy you. 1.5 million dollars for both sides, or 750,000 dollars for half the length, keeping in mind what Mr. Becken was saying earlier.
A hybrid could be what's being proposed here, and then doing the rest of it with an asphalt curb and the drains and all of that stuff. And I guess that would come in somewhere in between. Is there any appetite on council to get a report on this, so that we can see that as an option? The other thing, comment I would make, then, if this is supposed to be a two-phase project, then it should be a two-phase project. It shouldn't be, we'll do this phase now, and one day down the road, we'll talk about the other one. I suppose the motion could say, well, we'll do this this year, and the other one next year or the year after. But in any of these scenarios, your worship, I think we need to do diligence, which is to get a report from staff on it. Because this is something quite new on the table.
If I could just make a few comments. Just, the distance that's on this map here, 351.8 meters. However, the professional buildings take up, I'm just looking at it, maybe a quarter or a third of the south side. So there's less there. On the north side, the sidewalk extends just a little ways along the tap house. And there's that little bit of commercial there, I think there's a sidewalk there. So in fact, the, it's somewhat less than, somewhat less than half. So I think the intent is to get something done with close to what the budget's at, you know, 450,000, using some surpluses, to at least get a start. I think what Counsel Long suggests about continuing on with the delineated is good. However, I think we could certainly add that at next year's budget and do some consideration. But the preference, I believe, is a more permanent-type sidewalk. But this will be up to council to decide. But it is less than 350 meters on both sides, when you consider that some of it's already been complete, and I don't know what that measurement would be. But certainly, I think we're looking at somewhat less than half, you know, from, based on that estimate, because it is less than half of the distance. Exactly how much, I'm not sure. So, but council really is approving up to 8 and 1/4, so.
Well, this will be my second time to speak, so I better get it all out now, because I'm not supposed to speak a third time. But I would really ask council to refer this to staff and come back with a full-blown report with this and other options. And I'm sure then we could make a much better decision, your worship.
Thank you. Counsel Sparrow?
Yeah, I think that this option that's presented here is a good compromise, to get something started within this year's budget cycle. I agree that, you know, down the road, that completing the rest of the road to Wright would be ideal. And, you know, possibly maybe included in the motion could be that we refer the remainder of the project to the next year's budget cycle for discussion. I think that that would then maybe accomplish Counsel Long's concerns about actually having a future discussion on completing the whole project. But I think right now, as we've just gone through the budget process, we need to be making sure that we are conscious of the dollars involved. And I think that this is a compromise that can get us a project completed in this year's budget, and not be 1.5 million dollars, I think, which was the original amount. So I'm gonna support this, and I think we can talk about the other completion at the next year's budget process.
Thank you. Counsel Davis?
Okay. Can I have the picture right to Wright again?
Right to Glover?
Right to Wright.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, I like that.
Right to Glover. What, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm, this is, I'm perplexed. I'm just, if, it's just that, all the people up here don't get to use a sidewalk. And there's nothing wrong with having one good sidewalk right from Wright all the way down. Like, I don't wanna not vote against this, because I see the importance of getting a sidewalk there. And I see the importance of absolutely putting a crosswalk there. But it's just, well, we talked earlier, was it 1.1 million equals 1% increase in tax? Was that what we, I think, something like that? And if we're gonna spend that money, if we're gonna, if we're gonna almost spend the, well, you take the 450 that's in there, and you put everything on top, it's just that, like, if I lived up on gear there, I could, I could walk all the way down. It's a sidewalk on one way. It's, this sidewalk on this other side, what does it service? Like, you could, I don't know, when I'm walking down the street, if there's a sidewalk, I cross the street and walk on the sidewalk. So I don't wanna say this, but I gotta hold my nose and vote for it. But wouldn't it be, I just, I guess it's a debate. But to my way of thinking, if you could have the sidewalk all the way, and crosswalk here, and you put it on this side, so that the kids could use a crosswalk, and they could use that little bit of crosswalk. So I guess I have to make my mind up, don't I? I just wanted to voice my opinion on that.
Thank you.
I really like the idea of what we're doing here for safety, but I just, that sidewalk on that one side, I don't know if it's gonna be that well-used, as opposed to if you put it on this side and go all the way to Wright. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Qualley?
Oh, thanks, I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Can we call a question? It carries with Counsel Long opposed. Is there any other business?
Second.
Counsel Fox moves termination. Counsel Davis seconds. All those in favor? All those carried? Thank you.